Morning, everybody. Welcome to Elizabeth House this morning. There is no fire drill planned today, so if the fire alarm does go off, please vacate the room and make your way to the car park at the front of the building. Could I please remind members to ensure they turn off their mobile phones but turn on their microphones when they wish to speak? Julie, if you could start the recording and live streaming, please. Item one, apologies, Julie. Roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. councillor Anscombe, councillor Ashby, councillor Askew, councillor Attawill, councillor Bambridge, councillor Bate, councillor Annie Blackburn, councillor David Blackburn, councillor Borrett, councillor Bowes, councillor Brindle, councillor Marion Chapman Allen, councillor Sam Chapman Allen, councillor Clark, councillor Claussen, councillor Cogman, councillor Cowan, councillor Crane, councillor Duffield, councillor Eagle, councillor Fraser, councillor Gilbert, councillor Harvey, councillor Hewitt, councillor Hunter Clarke, councillor Hussey, councillor Kiddle, Kiddell, sorry. councillor Kittle Morris, councillor Coybird, councillor Land, councillor Monument, councillor Morton, councillor Nun, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Oliver, councillor Plummer, councillor Richmond, councillor Saget, councillor Samantha Taylor, councillor Sarah Taylor, councillor Taylor Taylor, councillor Terry, councillor Turner, councillor Webb, councillor Westman, councillor Wickerson, councillor Wilkin and councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any further apologies? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have apologies from councillor Annie Blackburn, councillor Brindle, councillor Claussen, councillor Eagle, councillor Fraser, councillor Gilbert, councillor Harvey, councillor Hewitt, councillor Land, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Plummer, councillor Richmond, councillor Terry and councillor Wilkin.
Any further? councillor Crane.
I don't know whether you mentioned Julie, but councillor Bambridge, he may well come late. Thank you.
Right then, item two, declarations of interest. No, we'll move swiftly on then to item three, the final proposal for local government reorganisation in Norfolk. And I'll invite Sam to take over.
Lovely. Thank you very much, Chairman, and good morning, colleagues. Today is an important day and history for Breckland and the accumulation of a great deal of work over the last six months as we last debated local government reorganisation within this chamber. As colleagues will know, following the announcement of LGR back in December and the subsequent instruction for areas to come forward with suggestions, particularly for us in Norfolk and across all two-tier areas in the country, we've been working at a very tight timescale imposed by this government. In partnership with five other district councils, their borough and the city, our officers and members have driven this forward and we haven't delivered a tick-box exercise. But we have delivered a bold, innovative vision for what the future could look like for public service delivery. As we covered in this chamber back in March, I still have great reservations about the need and nature for LGR. But we're not being asked about whether we think LGR is a good idea. We were asked by this government to make a submission on LGR. For me, Chair, if we contemplate the end of Breckland as we know it, it should be about creating something positive and lasting and using the fantastic legacy of Breckland as the foundations as we move forward. This shouldn't be about focus on cuts, reduction in services, but much bigger, around wider public sector reform, designed around residents and for residents in which residents benefit. I'm proud of what we've achieved. We, as Breckland, have always tackled the challenges head-on. We've been unified in our thinking differently attitude and we should be treating this as an opportunity around real positive and real change. The proposals we'll debate today represent, in my view, the best way forward and the only way forward. They protect that local services, the local identity and local values. They continue to build on our legacy from the Inspiring Communities Programme by proposing early intervention and that preventative model in the West at a completely transformational scale. They ensure that elected representatives have suitable areas and suitable populations where you will know your communities inside and out. Whilst this is a landmark moment, it is far from the conclusion. We are required to submit our proposals to government by the 26th of September. But it will be for the government to conduct its formal public consultation on the proposals it chooses to take forward. We expect this to start later part in 2025. The Secretary of State will then make their decision on what proposals, if any, they wish to adopt and we expect that in the first quarter of 2026. And from the point of view of moving forward and putting this into legislation, that will then become the change. With this in mind, members and colleagues, we should note that these documents are not binding. The budgets proposed are not fixed and it will be up to the elected members of that new unitary council which is established in 2027 to decide how it allocates its resources and designs those services. We, however, have promised what we think is the best way forward to undertake LGR, placing residents at the heart of service delivery. However, if it comes to pass and there's a lot of big decisions we're required to make, it will be for that new council and those new councils to make it. I will now hand over to the portfolio holder for devolution and LGR, councillor Bill Borrett, to explain in little more detail the proposal.
Thank you very much, Leader. Thank you, Madam Chairman. How did we get to this point? And I think Sam has very eloquently outlined the steps that we've been through. This report is a direct response to the instructions given by this council and in full council six months ago. And as the leader has said, the status quo was not an option. We were not allowed to propose the status quo. And so the government has said we must submit what we consider our best option. We have produced this document, working with six of the eight councils in Norfolk. And we have had the huge support of Breckland's two MPs. Terry Germy, the MP for South West Norfolk, and George Freeman, the MP for Mid Norfolk. So we move forward with this very much with cross-party support, as you will see from the opening pages of the document. So, what place did the public have within producing this? Well, following on from the full council meeting, we undertook a consultation exercise with our residents. And we had 5,403 survey responses. We dealt with 2,000 partners and we had over 1,500 individual engagements. We had 62,000 views of the future Norfolk website, which we set up, and 438,000 social media interactions. That is quite a substantial response. When you compare it with the 968 online responses to Norfolk County Council consultation and the 804 responses to the two unitaries consultation, we'll see that our consultation had the greatest reach. We then had to look at, okay, what was the outcome of that consultation? Residents told us that they wanted to know their councillors and for decisions to be made close to them. As such, we've ensured that our councillor numbers create a sensible elector-to-member ratio. They've told us that they want councils that know their communities and can tailor their services for their needs. We have therefore proposed localised models of service delivery that are reflective of place. And they have told us that although savings and value for money are essential, they should never come at the expense of good services in a council that is close to the people. Which is why we have designed a system in this document in which over £50 million of savings will be generated by the fourth year after transition without imposing a council for our areas that is far too distant and remote to make a difference to local people. One of the key issues was around council tax harmonisation. And in Breckland, that's felt far more acutely than elsewhere, given that we have the lowest district council tax in England. And therefore, any harmonisation would look probably to increase Breckland's, the residents' council tax by more than other residents elsewhere in Norfolk. We had, when this document was complete but before it was published, I chaired a members briefing in this room for all members to come, ask questions on the document and propose any thoughts that they may have that might need to be included. Then took those proposals to our partners and have produced the document that you see here today. And I have to say, it has been with a huge positive feeling amongst all the partners. And they include the Liberal Democrat leader of North Norfolk District Council, the Labour leader of the City Council, the independent leader of Kings Lynn and West Norfolk Council, the Conservative leader of Great Yarmouth Borough Council. So we've had a full cross-party proposal here. And interestingly enough, we've also had the support of the independent MP for Great Yarmouth. Contrary to some opinion that has been said elsewhere, all three councils are financially viable from day one and the evidence is supported in the document in front of you today. In addition, and only in the three-unitary model, Breckland residents have the potential to be protected from large council tax hikes. Sorry, I'm going to put my teeth back in. From large council tax hikes and the high levels of debt suffered by Norwich City Council, which is higher per capita than the county council's debt. And from being subsumed into a system that does not meet this community's needs. So by protecting council tax and keeping it low and increasing local accountability, I hope that you will have, and I hope that you will support today's proposals. As Sam has said, all the decisions about the shape and form of the new councils will be for the elected members of the new councils. So it is not for us today to say that these will be the outcomes. And this is just a proposal, so this isn't necessarily going to be what the minister decides. We put this forward. I understand the government is going to consult on all the options that are put forward and therefore, members, residents and our MPs will have the opportunity to comment on whatever it is that the government puts out to propose. But we must remember that the final decision on the shape of Norfolk is not going to be made by the residents. It's not going to be made by local councillors. It is going to be made by the minister and it is the minister's alone decision. And that power has been reserved to the minister to decide what Norfolk will look like. I hope this represents a good showing and gives our residents a chance to have their views heard by the minister when this is decided. And I would, the recommendations are on page three of the council papers. And they are that the council agrees to endorse the final proposal for a three-unitary model for local government reorganisation in Norfolk. And that the council agrees to delegate to the chief executive officer in consultation with the leader the authority to make any necessary non-material amendments to the final proposal and submit the final proposal to the Secretary of State for Housing, Communities and Local Government in accordance with the government's prescribed process. And I will also be asking, Madam Chairman, for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borrett. Could I have a second for that proposal? councillor Webb? Are there any questions? Councillor Chapman Allen will be answering those. Councillor Cogman?
Sorry, point of order. The second should have been asked whether she wished to speak now or at the end of the debate.
I'll speak at the end, please.
It's second in the motion put forward. Technically, I think councillor Underclark's quite right that you can choose when you speak in the debate. It's a pleasure. Thank you very much, councillor Underclark.
Questions such, but I can phrase it as a question if I need to. But I just wanted to offer our thanks to the officers for their evident hard work in this exercise, over and above their usual commitments.
Councillor Attawill?
Thank you, Chairman. And I too would like to pay tribute to the officers and the members and Bill for leading this, which has quite clearly been a very comprehensive exercise. Having read and studied the documents, I think it's quite an exciting prospect, actually. Sad that we won't have a Breckland in the future, looks that way. But I think this offers people in Norfolk a unique opportunity to model the services that they need. And quite clearly from the documents, that's got potential to offer huge savings that can be played back into frontline services. I do have a couple of questions, if I may. I mean, the biggest concern I have around the whole exercise is quite frankly, the debt that Norfolk County Council holds, the 900 million. I mean, I'm on record for saying that I think that's been shambolically run as a council for years. And obviously, a lot of the financial figures rely on exactly how you're going to disaggregate the debt. And I just wondered, if the three, presuming the three unitaries go ahead, if they can't agree on how to disaggregate that debt, who arbitrates that final proposal? Because they, obviously, it's going to be tailored for each individual area. I presume that the City Council, that the Greater Norwich Authority, that will have to absorb all the debt that currently Norwich City Council has. But there's got to be agreement between those three parties on that debt. And I'd just like to know, we know, do we currently know, is there a process for arbitrating that if there can't be an agreement reached? The other thing was, I noticed in document on appendix two, and it is good to see so many local leaders and MPs who are supporting this proposal, and that's very welcome. I was a little bit surprised not to see James Wild or Jeremy Mayhew's names down there. I could understand why Ben Goldsborough, the MP for South Norfolk, is on there because South Norfolk have issued alternative proposals. But could you give us an indication as to why we don't have the support from the two aforementioned MPs, please? Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Roger, and thanks for your comments and the support. The work has been undertaken by the officers at pace. In relation to the support we've got for the Breckland MPs, I'm delighted the work which councillor, sorry, which the MP Terry Germy and George Freeman have supported. I know that they've met with Maxine and Andrew to talk through this and galvanise their frustrations with how local government deliver its services and making sure that this presents, as you quite rightly articulated, the opportunities to iron out those creases. I can't comment for the other MPs, they're not in my patch. But I know that those other leaders have been trying with much enthusiasm to get them to see the benefits and realisations within the framework which the government has presented and why three is the solution for that. I think I am disappointed they haven't signed up to this because I do believe it's going to deliver the best type of services for residents within that. In relation to how we begin to move forward, if the government agree any decision, one, two or three, the partnership position then undertakes and leaders and chief execs then begin to come together to work out how we either disaggregate if that's required or not as the case may be. From an arbitrage position, we will appoint a senior responsible officer within each authority to be our representative and they will work through those legal positions on that. But it will be for the new unitary council to agree how we disaggregate and deal with any debt provision and service that debt moving forward. It won't be, as councillor Borrett introduced, up to us or the county council. Principles which have taken place previously, when you've seen other unitary councils move forward in which there has been a disaggregation and smaller unitaries created, it's been done per capita, per head, within the population of that locality rather than anything much more clunky than that. And you'll see within that, that's some of the formulas we've used as the provision to understand what it could look like and the savings we've announced of that sort of 49 million net at year four within our savings provision within that three basis. But that health warning is there. You've seen other unitary councils move forward of after that exceptional financial support. But we think this is going to give the best opportunity and future-proof and deal with any shocks the local government may face moving forward with that type of model and what we believe the new unitary council should adopt as disaggregation for the debt.
Councillor Hannah Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I hope you've all had a good summer. And thank you for the opportunity to address the chamber on the proposed reorganisation of Norfolk's local government into three unitary councils. We in Reform are very optimistic for our future if indeed the government agree with our report. While I am personally deeply saddened at the prospect of losing Breckland's distinct identity, the government's determination to overhaul local government leaves us little choice, which councillor Borrett, I think, has already referred to. So reluctantly, we must support this reorganisation, but we do so with the firm belief that it can deliver real benefits, most crucially, keeping low council tax and delivering vital local services for our residents in Breckland and in the future, hopefully, across West Norfolk. The current two-tier system with Norfolk County Council and seven district councils, and although many of us like the current system, in reality, it is probably outdated and inefficient. And although change can be difficult, reform is necessary across every corner of this country. Layers of bureaucracy mean duplicated efforts, wasted resources and ultimately, higher costs passed on to taxpayers. The future Norfolk proposal offers a solution, three unitary authorities that streamline operations while preserving local focus. Why three unitaries? A single county-wide council risks becoming a distant Norwich-centric giant, neglecting rural areas like ours. But three strikes a balance. West Norfolk can prioritise our rural roads, support for our aging population, investment in agri-tech and local jobs to keep our communities thriving. Importantly, while these unitaries will be separate, they could and should, and this is important, share services like waste management or procurement, save money. That's what we will be pushing for if indeed the government adopt our proposal. Let's have the best of all worlds, save money but keep strong local democracy. And I will also be urging the next administration and the government to give more powers to town councils under this new structure where appropriate and where they can handle them. Empowering our towns to take on more responsibilities will ensure decisions are made even closer to the people they affect. And this strengthens democracy at its roots and will give our communities a louder voice. And on council tax, Breckland residents benefit, as you know, from the lowest rate in Norfolk and we will not be voting to put this in jeopardy. The three-unitary model promises significant savings and by saving money, it will mean we can maintain low council tax rates. While I mourn, therefore, the loss of Breckland's name, I see hope in a West Norfolk unitary that can deliver better services from housing to social care while keeping our taxes low. And we in Reform are very much looking forward to those elections when they come and for the opportunity for the public to choose a new administration to deliver. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
It's a motion, it's a motion, Madam Chairman. It's not a question-and-answer session, as far as I'm aware. And therefore, that is the Reform's position and I've put it to the council and we will support the motion that's been put forward by the administration here. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hannah Clark. I was just given you the opportunity, if you wanted it. Councillor Clarke?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a comment and a question. You'll be pleased to hear. First of all, I'd like to echo the thanks that councillor Kendrick Cogman has given and others to the tremendous amount of work that the officers in particular, I won't single any particular officers out, but obviously there's one in particular who's been at the forefront of this, obviously with the cabinet member. Huge amount of work regardless of different views one may have about particular areas of the submission. Speaking as the East Dierum resident in council, sorry, Dierum, because I dropped East Dierum. Whilst I'm supportive of the three-unitary model as outlined, how confident are you and can you assure residents and businesses that the range and quality of services delivered will be at least the same level and sustainable both in the West Norfolk proposals and also in the Norfolk-wide proposals? Thank you.
Thanks for your support, councillor Clarke. I think everyone so far has presented and articulated what opportunity this will allow us to do and some of the frustrations and concerns at how some services delivered across the whole of the local government family. And what we're trying to achieve across the districts who agree with the three model is placing residents first. And you'll see within the supporting document, actually, we want to design services with residents, not with us in our ivory tower telling them how those services should be delivered. And actually, if we look at some of the successes within London Boroughs and Manchester's Metts, those residents who are those service users actually have been able to design them to be more agile, adaptable and nimble, but more importantly, cost-effective in those places where it matters most and allowing that cost efficiency and that saving to be ploughed back into the services across the whole of the local government family. So I'm very confident that, as we said in the opening remarks, if we can use the foundations and the spirit of what Breckland has achieved so far, particularly around the Inspiring Communities Programme and in Kings Lynn with the Marmot Programme, actually, we will go from strength to strength and allowing our officers and the new authority in 2027 to begin to think what a future vision could look like, using the best practice which we've seen in other parts of the country, but actually put in our residents of Norfolk front and centre in that design and co-design, I think we'll deliver services which will be fit for the future.
If there's nobody else wanting to...
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome the phraseology in page 71, which is that the three unitary councils will maintain a partnership approach to museums, working together during the implementation phase to agree an approach which best supports our local heritage. As members may well be aware, that joint working arrangement has been highly successful since the previous reorganisation in 1974. So it sets a clear precedent for partnership work in where appropriate. Thank you.
Councillor Cowan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you councillor Borrett and the officer corps for producing a document which residents to whom I've spoken over the last few weeks have had a number of questions answered favourably as a result. The vast majority of the population that I represent in this ward of All Saints and Weyland are most concerned about local representation. They're most concerned about access to their elected councillor, how that might happen in a unitary authority. And they're most concerned about the cost to them of the whole reorganisation package. So this particular proposal that I've discussed with them, I think has satisfied most of their concerns. The fact that in the West Norfolk proposal, the unitary of three, we'd have about 70, 75 or so elected members, gives them confidence that they will be able to access their elected representatives relatively easily compared with the 160 odd that the county council's single unitary would deliver. They're also, I think, it's fair to say, somewhat relieved that the council tax level that they pay in Breckland at the moment will unfortunately increase but increase by the smallest amount of the three proposals that have been published thus far. And I think it is to our credit that we've put place at accessibility, both for residents and businesses at the forefront of our proposal. And as we've heard many times during this discussion, this is not something that's been designed around how the council may function. It's designed around the function... designed around how the council may function, it's designed around the functionality that the residents and businesses will be able to access in the future. So I have enormous confidence that once the Minister reads the proposals that are sent to him later this year, that given the consultation numbers that we've been able to derive, given the attitude that we've taken regarding the place that we call West Norfolk in this proposal, that really there is no other solution which delivers both savings and maintains the high quality of services and gives people the democratic accountability that they look for. So I would encourage us all to support this particular proposal. It delivers what it should do, which is high-quality services in the future for residents and businesses in this part of Norfolk. Thank you.
Councillor Webb?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to say that I totally support the proposal put forward by councillor Borrett. I would like to thank the officers and councillor Borrett for their hard work in developing a proposal which is best for our residents. I think what we've all listened to and what we've all said today says it all. So that's all I've got to say on the subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the vote. Councillor Borrett?
Yes, I just wanted to propose the recorded vote, but just also make one further point, if I may, that if we decide to support this, to go forward today, it will go forward to government. It doesn't matter what happens in any of the other councils who are a party to this, it is not dependent on them. This is Breckland's proposal, and it will go forward. So if we vote for it today, I can guarantee that it will be one of the proposals that the government gets to consider.
Thank you, councillor Borrett. So could I please have a show of hands for a recorded vote? Anonymous. Thank you, then. If we can go back to the vote on the proposals, please, all in favour? Oh, it's recorded. Okay, you'll do it. Go on, Julie. Councillor Anscombe? Councillor Ashby? Councillor Askew? Councillor Attawill? Councillor Bate? Councillor David Blackburn? Councillor Borrett? Councillor Bowes? Councillor Marion Chapman Allen? Councillor Sam Chapman Allen? Councillor Clark? Councillor Cogman? Councillor Cowan? Councillor Crane? Councillor Duffield? Councillor Hunter Clarke? Councillor Hussy? Councillor Kiddell? Councillor Kittle-Morris? Councillor Kai Bird? Councillor Monument? Councillor Morton? Councillor Nun? Councillor Oliver? Councillor Suggit? Councillor Samantha Taylor? Councillor Sarah Taylor? Councillor Taylor-Taylor? Councillor Turner? Councillor Webb? Councillor Westman? Councillor Wickerson? And councillor Wilkinson? So the motion is passed. We'll move on to any other items, and I know that, Rob, you have one.
Thank you, Chairman. With your permission under urgent matters, some members will be aware we've got an application coming forward to Planning Committee on the 16th of October. Some members of the Planning Committee have decided that they've predetermined that application and are recusing themselves from the meeting. There's therefore an opportunity for the group leaders to address any issues they may have to ensure there is full member representation at that meeting and training is able to be provided ahead of the meeting. So with your permission, Chairman, I'd like to ask the group leaders if there's any changes they need to make to their appointments to the Planning Committee. Thank you.
Are there any changes? Councillor Atwell?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Could we remove councillor Keith Gilbert as the substitute on planning? And in his place, put David Wickerson, please? Okay.
Sorry, just to clarify, obviously, I'm a substitute member, I'm not predetermined, so I intend to sit on that committee as a substitute. I don't need to do anything further, do I? Just seek your guidance on that.
No, councillor Underclough, that's entirely appropriate. It's only in a position where both the member and the substitute had predetermined that we have to address, or felt they predetermined that we have to address the issue. In your circumstance, that's entirely fine without any change.
If there's no further matters to bring forward, just before we quickly close the meeting, I would like us all to wish Julia happy birthday. Happy birthday. There we go, all done.